Of the Joint Committee of the City Council and School Committee. I'd like to first recognize the members of the school committee here that are on the committee that are with us. I see a school committee member, Willahen, is here. I see school committee member, Colomore, is here. From the city council, Councillor Howie Greeney is here. Our council president, Tessa Murphy-Ronbaletti, is with us. And then yours truly, Kevin Jordan, is here. Yeah, he represents Ward Four. I see also online. Yes, thank you. I want to make sure I don't miss something. Also from the school committee, we have from Ward Four, our new school committee member, Mr. Orlando Esaza, is with us. And I see in the room, we have from Ward Two, from the city council, Carmen Acasio is with us. Online, I see councillor-at-large Patty Devine is with us online. And I also see Ward Five councillor Linda Vakin is with us online. So I believe I've captured everybody that is with us. And also needing no introduction, I see our school superintendent is with us. You're welcome to come in, by the way, please. All right. While we're doing that, the first item on the agenda is the minutes of October tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Move to even accept the minutes?
Second.
Motion to receive and accept the minutes. Any discussion on that item? Hearing not. Okay, councillor Willahen? Oh, good, thank you. Thank you, Jeffrey. Jeffrey did those for us. He's usually excellent.
The best.
Yes, okay, very good. On the motion to receive and approve the minutes of our October tenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to remove item two from the table?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to remove from the table item number two. Item number two is an order introduced by councillors Bartley, Jordan, and Greeney. Ordered that the school department, the school committee, the receiver, and the mayor present a plan for the future of Metcalf School. I'd like to hear the long-term plans as well as the temporary ones. I'd like the district to consider the city continuing using the school in its, for its current purpose, as a learning institution. If not, if that is not the plan, then let's consider it as the headquarters of the school department. Should a committee be formed? What plans are being discussed? The building erected in nineteen eleven is iconic and should be preserved and, if needed, rehabilitated and repurposed for city uses. So that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Okay, so that's now before us. And we have our school superintendent, Anthony Soto, is with us. I think probably unless, without further ado, I will read an email. I did get a couple of questions and he was not able to make it. But councillor Bartley did give some thoughts. He had a conflict for this evening, so I might take from that a few questions. But Anthony, could you kind of give us a high-level overview of the state of the state of Metcalf School? And kind of at this point, to the best you can ascertain, where do you see the future of that building?
Yeah, thank you for having me tonight and happy to have this discussion. So as soon as we got that order, we put together a working group. Mr. Bartley himself was on that working group. We had Rory, we had Mary Ann Courier from the school department, and Felipe Johnson, who's a principal in Holyoke Public Schools, Dr. Mahoney, Mr. Mangano, our finance guy, Ms. Mogel, who oversees the transitions program down at Open Square, Sean Sheedy, and Rosalie Tenzie-Williams. So they all got together, they had a series of meetings. And as part of that process, they discussed a bunch of things, you know, looking at about fourteen different options. And we included in the scope of that work, because the transitions, the part, uh, school that's down at Open Square, has expressed that they've been outgrowing their space. And there were, I know there were rumors about them potentially moving to Dean. So, and a lot of parents were concerned, so we wanted this group to also explore an option for that program. And ultimately, they put, they put a report together, which, you know, you have actually...
Is this the one dated February fifth?
Yes.
Okay.
You have, there's hard copies there for anybody that would like a copy. There's two things there, one relative to another item on the agenda, and then one that we're talking about right now. So essentially, there, the, the group that met, put a report together and made a recommendation to me that we use Metcalf for the following. So right now, we have sort of an alternative program down at the bus center over there. And we're actually paying rent of fifty thousand dollars a year to HCC for, for the, for that space. And they have also expressed that, you know, they're kind of outgrowing that space. The kids don't have access to a gym, they don't have access to a cafeteria. It's, it's really designed, that, that program is designed for students that are overage and undercredited and are highly at risk of dropping out. Quite frankly, in the past, these students wouldn't be in school. This is a really good pathway for them to, you know, step away from the traditional high school setting and do the work that they need to do to catch up on credits and, and get a diploma. And the, the program has contributed greatly to our increase in our graduation rate, our decrease in our dropout rate. But it is a, you know, it's, the space itself was good and it worked, but it definitely has some deficiencies. And they are recommending that we move that program there, which would allow us to eliminate that fifty thousand dollar lease that we're paying. In addition to that, we've recognized a gap in Holyoke Public Schools for students that aren't overage and undercredited, but are struggling in a traditional setting, either behaviorally or attendance-wise. You know, you're not eligible to go to that program if you're, you know, a freshman in high school or an eighth grader, because you're not overage and you're not, you know, you don't have credits yet, like you do when you get to high school. It's really designed for, you know, juniors and seniors who are like really far behind. And if they don't get their act together, they're, they're not going to graduate on time. So we recognize that as a gap. And we, we put a design team together to put together a program for, for those kids that, while, while they might not be overage and undercredited, like they need something different. And we'd like to include at Metcalf, a program like that, starting small, right? We want to start with ninth and tenth graders and eventually open it up to seventh and eighth graders. So it would be a program for seventh to tenth grade, for students that are struggling and like are on a path to, you know, hopefully we can, this, this program would help get them re-engaged and, and like back on track to, you know, just, just school in general.
Yeah, Superintendent Soto, is this program a, similar to a GED program? And is there a GED that's available at the end of it, if they take a test to pass the GED?
So the Program Opportunity Academies, there is another program in that space that we run for HSET, for GED, for adults essentially. But the program is really to get the kids a diploma. Like these kids take MCAS, they, you know, they, they do school, they make up all their credits. Their learning is a little more customized to their passions and their schedule's a little different. You know, I gotta, I gotta admit, like attendance there isn't as like what you would expect in a traditional school where kids are showing up every day. But it's a much more personalized experience for the kids. They get, they get a diploma, like that's the goal, not, not a GED.
But my follow-up is if, if a youngster or a young man or woman doesn't quite fit to that program, is that GED program available to them to?
Yes.
Okay, that's, as long as there's a, a movement into that program, if they don't, that's good.
That is, that is correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. The committee also, like, you know, in that, in that letter, you can see how everybody on that committee voted. Like it, there's like fourteen different options and you can see who voted what. But overwhelmingly, the committee decided that we shouldn't have central office at Metcalf, that it would be better suited for that educational program that we just talked about. And, but they did say like, because we're moving STEM school out of Dean, can we explore an option where some of central office goes to Dean? There, there was conversation about the enrollment center. Like people really liked that the enrollment center and family center is located downtown, close to City Hall here. So is there a model where like we just keep one floor at Central Supply for the Family Resource Center and Enrollment Center? Keep them here downtown, but like everybody on the third floor move over to Dean. And they also, you know, while they're, while they don't want to make any changes to the transition program, we want to keep them there. They asked, they're asking me to explore whether or not that program, like design what it would look like at Dean and share that with the families. Because when, when there were rumors that the program was moving, I got a lot of complaints from families that like, no, we can't move those kids back to high school. We're trying to transition them into the real world and give them a real-world experience. Like it, it sounds like it would regress their progress towards that. So we, you know, the committee or the working group acknowledged the concerns that parents raised and said, you know what? Let's not move them, let's keep them at Open Square. We have a lease up until November. So we have to talk to the owners of Open Square and see if we could extend it for the year while we, while we explore like getting a designer in and taking a look at Dean. Because again, we have a middle school right now that is moving out of the Dean campus. So there's definitely some space there that we can either grow Dean, right? Like offer more shops or, you know, move transition to it or move a portion of central office into it. We want to work with a designer and a consultant to just like look at that space, design it out for, you know, the recommendation that's coming to me is that we, we look at a consultant to help us design that and see what, what the possibilities would be, how long that would take, how much it would cost, things, things of that nature. So that is something that I'm really taking into consideration. I do have this on the agenda for the full school committee. They have not seen a copy of the report yet. I haven't taken any action yet on the report, it's just a recommendation to me.
This report here?
Yeah.
Oh, so we're the first to say it?
Yes.
Well, I...
We're honored.
I did email the school committee and said, hey, I want you to have this. Like we haven't discussed it in committee, but it's, it's going to be discussed at, at this subcommittee meeting. So I don't want them to be caught off guard. So we're, we are adding that to the agenda to have a discussion. And I'm hoping that I get a little bit of direction from them too, on whether or not they agree with it and want me to, you know, consider a lot of the recommendations that are on there.
Sure. I had just a couple of questions and then I'll pour into if anybody else has questions. In terms of the number of students that would be transitioning, when we say these programs, like how many children are we talking? In our case, are young adults, but how many people are we talking about?
Yeah, um, so attendance is not great in that program. We probably serve over a hundred and fifty students. But the, you know, because of attendance, we'll have any, anywhere from like, you know, fifty to seventy kids there daily, right? Some of them come a few days a week, some of them are there every day, but like some of them come a couple of days a week. And, you know, their, their education is customized where like, hey, you're, you're short twenty-five credits. If you do this work between now and, and May, you got a shot at...
Getting your diploma.
At getting your diploma. If you don't, then like, you know, you're gonna have to go again next year and chip away at it. So it's more customized.
Okay.
But I'd say about anywhere from fifty to seventy kids every day.
Okay.
And then the alternative program that we're, we're, we're in the middle of designing for, for those that aren't overcredited and under age, or overage and undercredited. We're looking to start with, with like, you know, twenty kids, twenty to forty kids. And, you know, it'll be no more...
So roughly a hundred kids in the building?
Yeah, and then, you know, once we open it up to seventh and eighth graders, it could get up to like a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty, which, which is plenty of space, Metcalf right now. You know, they, they have, you know, a couple hundred kids there right now.
Right, I was gonna say, usually it's, it's been designed for many more than that.
Right.
Okay. Interesting. Will you need any capital as part of this transition? Or are they going to be able to take Metcalf on pretty much as is?
So we, there's gonna be some, some capital expenses, but not, not a lot. The, the bigger expenses will come if we have to like move transitions and central office to Dean. Like customizing those spaces. We did have a rich discussion the other day at school committee. And there's a strong desire from the school committee to like grow Dean more. So that could, you know, like, we gotta explore it, right?
Right, why not?
You know, we gotta explore, you know, it might not be a good idea to move central office over there if we want to have more programs, have more students. So, you know, we, we definitely want to explore it, which would go deep into like, this is how much it's gonna cost. But I don't anticipate a ton of capital going into Metcalf, because it's already used for kids. I do anticipate some furniture, right, like right now.
But that stuff you would cover out of your own budget.
Yeah, we, yeah, we're looking to, to do it in a way that we're not asking the, the city council to, to fund any capital.
Councillor Greeney?
Yeah, just quickly, Dean Tech is really designed for vocational education. And sometimes a lot of young people who are not really interested in the academic programs are more interested in vocational education, whether it be electronics or whether it be metal fabrication or something like that. And Dean has really been built for that exact purpose. And, you know, I would think that with the push, both federally, statewide, local-wise now for an increase in vocational education, where, where young people can actually go out and, and get an education where they can find a job at the end of their education is, is something that should be prized, I think. So, you know, certainly Dean is the perfect spot for that type of education.
Yeah, absolutely. We have nine shops there. You know, we, we, we had a record amount of applications for this upcoming year. I think we had two hundred and seventy-four students that are applying to get into Dean and only a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty will get in. So we do have a waitlist.
I thought that building was built for six hundred stu...
I'm talking about freshmen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So for freshman applications, like we've had over a hundred kids every year on a waitlist. Because, mainly because space was limited. You gotta remember, when I first got here, there was a hundred and, you know, twenty-six kids at Dean. And like there was no vocational programming going on. It was like, you know, we talk about the dumping ground and stuff like that. Those, we've, we've taken that and like invested in it heavily, rebranded it. And like now it's a school that kids want to go to. And we have just about four hundred kids there right now. The, the, I think the, the, the thing that we have to consider, the, the thing that we have to honestly struck, grapple with and, and like confront head-on is a, a major increase to Dean has an impact on what we're, what we're able to do at Holyoke High North, right? So right now, we have, and I'm, I'm throwing a bunch of programming out here, so please don't take this as like...
Gospel.
As God, like, no, just like I'm targeting any programs. But I do want to name, you know, we have Band, we have like Holyoke Theater Company, we have like, you know, Dual Enrollment Program, we have Gateway to College Program, we have advanced courses, like advanced placement courses. Like we have, we're able to offer all of those things and have those resources, because there's a thousand kids there. If you move two hundred kids over to Dean, you really have to evaluate what you can do, because those resources now go to Dean, right?
Right.
So I just want to, like, I, this is in no way putting Holyoke High against Dean, but we really have to think about how much do we want to grow? And how do we do it in a way that has a minimal impact on both campuses?
One of the keys is co-ops, too, how many businesses will co-op with, with the institution, which is, that, that makes a huge difference.
Yeah, right now, we, you know, again, two years ago, we had no kids on co-op. And last year, we had about twenty-seven. This year, we have even more than that. And that was a major shift that we made to the schedule. Like kids, like back in the, it, we went back to what it was like back in the day when you had an A week and a B, a shop week and an academic week. And that allowed us to get, you know, more aggressive with working with partners to get kids out in the, in the workforce on co-op, because kids were actually in shop for a whole week. More recently, like before last year for the, for a while, kids were getting like two periods of shop and, you know, four periods of academics every day. And that schedule wasn't conducive to being able to partner. Nobody wants to, you know, is gonna want to hire a kid if, if they can only work, you know, two hours out of the entire day. It, it wouldn't work. So now we have a ton of partners, kids are on co-ops, they're excited, juniors and seniors. And it works for, you know, for all of our partners. They can have, you know, one set of juniors one week that they have, you know, if they have two openings, for example. That, they'll take two kids that are juniors for one week, and then the other week, they'll have two kids that are seniors. And it's worked out well, kids love it. We're, we're really, we're really, we've really done a lot to grow Dean and, and from what it was, you know, nine years ago.
That's great too, because the testing would be in their discipline, whatever discipline they're in, which makes a big difference for the youngsters.
Yep.
That's good.
Any other questions from anyone? School committee member, Willahen?
Thank you for the report. Yeah, we had a similar order, you know, six, six months ago or so, just on the status of Metcalf. And the Assistant Superintendent sort of gave the same pros and cons as you did. You know, so just with my knowledge of the program, the Opportunity Academy, I know me and Mr. Colomore, we attend the graduation ceremony each year. And like I said, you know, it's really a big class, it's bigger than you think. The students are a little bit older than traditional, most of them have jobs, right? Correct?
Yeah, I mean, it, it varies. Like some of them are graduating on time, some of them, they take another year to graduate. But what we love about that graduation is just personal, right?
Personal, yeah.
When you, when you do it at Dean and Holyoke High, you read their name, they grab their diploma. Like at Opportunity Academy, because it's smaller, you get to hear their story. Like this is, when, when Kevin came to us junior year, you know, he was really lazy and he wasn't working hard and he was thinking of quitting. And like, we've worked around what I know about Kevin, and you just hear their story and it's amazing. It like, it's one of my favorite graduations.
It's special.
Yeah, so they seem to be juggling, you know, their academics, they might be juggling some hours in work.
Yep, absolutely.
And they all, they might have a child or so. So they're juggling, you know, life experiences plus the classroom. So I think it's a different opportunity for, for the students, again, not to drop out. We want to keep them in the program and have them succeed. So I know, you know, my opinion six months ago was that, you know, the Opportunity, Opportunity Academy, you know, the best place for that would be at Metcalf. You know, I was sort of, kind of a negative, against moving the central, central offices to that space. And it looks like the, the working, the working group had the same opinion, so thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Colomore?
Yeah, just, did they take, yeah, did they take a survey of parking conditions at Metcalf? You know?
They addressed that in the report, there's plenty of parking spaces. Because remember, we got, right now, we have a school with a bunch of teachers and, you know, over two hundred students. So like, there's plenty of parking there.
Great. And we're gonna talk later in the agenda about the future of the headquarters, or at least get a flavor for where we're at at the moment with that. I know this report alludes to it, but we, we have another item on that later. So on this item, colleagues, what do you think? This item has been complied with? Oh, mea culpa, I almost forgot. Councillor Bartley had emailed me some comments, I'll just read them here. He asked, said, here are my comments regarding agenda item two, the Metcalf Working Group. The ad hoc committee met several times and a report was produced by HPS staff and submitted to the receiver, where it is pending his comments. I don't know that this report is yet for public consumption, but apparently now it is. So I think we're good, that was all he wanted to point out on that item. Okay, so I think we're good there. All right, without further ado, oh, yeah, sure.
One more quick statement, yeah, just having the gym there, that might be an incentive for some of the students to want to attend.
Oh, yeah, kids are gonna love that.
In my basketball-playing days, you know, that would have been something, if I can shoot some hoops for, you know, an hour after class, you know, I might want to show up. So I think that's gonna be a good incentive, thank you.
Motion that item two is complied with?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, unanimous.
Move to take item three off the table?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to take item number three off the table. To refresh your memory, this is a communication from the Higher Teachers Association to the mayor and the school committee. It's a letter regarding the process to hire the superintendent. All in favor of taking that off the table for discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Let's just start off with, we obviously have this communication, it was given to us in October. We did review the letter previously. Anthony, I understand, or at least maybe it was explained to me, what's the current status? Are you the interim now? Was, was there some sort of selection recently that you're the, and we know you're the state receiver, but then there was like perhaps a decision to make you the interim superintendent pending a final process? Or what, what's the status at this?
Yeah, so as you, as you mentioned, the school committee did decide to appoint me for, for up, up to a year, essentially. And the reason that was done is because, you know, the commissioner had laid out to the school committee that if they do plan on doing a search, there's a lot of statistics on like when that process has to start. And the reality is, is that process has to start in November. If you really want to have a competitive process and get a lot of applicants, qualified applicants. They, they shared a presentation with the school committee that showed like, hey, if you really want to do a search, like you guys are already behind the ball.
Right.
And, and it's not that the school committee was dragging their feet. It's because the, the school committee has appointed a community advisory group to, to weigh in on what they think they want the school committee to do when it has to come to this decision. Like the reality is like the school committee doesn't have to do a search. They, they could, but they're interested in, in hearing from this community advisory board, what is it that you guys want and what do you think we should do? And I think that that committee is scheduled, they, they've had already a couple of meetings to discuss this. And they're gonna be releasing a report or a recommendation. I know the school committee is working with a consultant that's helping them facilitate these conversations. But in the meantime, the school committee is acknowledging like, there's no way we can do a search now to get a superintendent in place. And, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, we, we clarify with staff and clarify with the community what's happening next year. You know, people start thinking, you know, like what's going on? Do I gotta look for a job? Am I, you know?
Right.
And, and like at least now, people know what to expect for next year.
Sure.
And then depending on what comes out of that report from the community advisory board and what the school committee wants to do, you know, I think that they're, you know, they'll take that next step. And I know that there were some concerns about like, why was this done? If we're going through a community advisory board process and what does that look like? So the, the biggest reason this was done is because the school committee is waiting to hear from this community advisory board. And we can't wait for April to come to decide on what we're gonna do for next, this upcoming school year. If we try to do a search in April, you're likely not gonna get a ton of applicants. You're really limiting the pool. You're really limiting the pool of applicants that would be even considering going to a new district. So um, I, you know, that, that's where that stands now is. Um, you know, my appointment and then they're, they're gonna work with the community advisory board. To see what they have to say and what they have to weigh in on. And then at some point, the school committee is gonna decide like, hey, do we wanna do a search? Do we wanna keep Anthony Soto in place even beyond next year and and talk about that? Or like, you know, what is it that we're gonna do? You know, we're really waiting to hear from them what that, what that looks like.
And and typically, a new superintendent, if they were gonna start, it would be something like in the summer of twenty twenty six, correct? So that you're up and running. Don't normally those transitions occur in the summer like?
July one usually. Usually there's a contract through June thirtieth and if if you are doing a search. It it's ideal and best practice to start in November. And then uh, select somebody that would start July one. If if the school committee so chooses to go that route.
Is is there a deadline for this community uh group to uh, to find to to get this report to us?
I think so like, the, the group was supposed to have a report by March. There has been some challenges in getting that group together. And I know they're a little behind, so I think we're looking at a report in April now. Um, that the school committee would be getting from, from this group.
Just to have a sense more about the group, are these, is there a paid consultant or somebody working with this group? By the school committee, can we get a little bit more on the group?
Yeah, that was, we got a list of, I wanna say twenty seven people. Everybody that applied, um.
And and by the way, is there like to what the, what the ta- the Teachers Association was requesting that? They would be intricately part of the process, that various community members would be part of the process?
That is not, that is not what that group is gonna be doing, so. I know that in that letter, you know, uh, i- it talks about a democratic process. The democratic process is electing your school committee.
Oh, absolutely.
School committee and then they have the authority to appoint a superintendent, to do a search. To do whatever it is that, they they have the authority to hire a superintendent, so.
As they always have.
As they always have.
Now, just on that point though, but not so much who makes the final decision, which I would anticipate that would be the school committee members. But is more of, are we getting a broad section is the, is the? Group that's advising the school committee and vetting candidates from a cross section? You know, there's parents, there's teachers, there's various community stakeholders, is is there a wide breadth of of individuals?
Yeah, there's parents, there's students, there's community members, there's teachers. But I do, you you mentioned it again and I do wanna clarify what this group is doing. This group is not vetting candidates, there is currently not a search for a superintendent. This group right now is probably, you know, and I haven't been a part of it rightfully so, like I wanna step away from that process. They're probably having conversations of whether or not they want the school committee to do a search, A. And B, like, what are the qualities that you wanna see in a superintendent? That process happened when they brought Dr. Shreik in, that process happened when they hired me as the receiver. There were some community stakeholder groups that said, hey, what do you, what do you wanna see in a superintendent? You know, what qualifications, what, you know, the, whatever, all these things happened and. And what happened back when I got hired was, you know, the commissioner decided, well, we heard from all of you. And Anthony has all these qualities, which is why we wanna appoint him as the receiver. So the, the school committee will ultimately and eventually do something similar. And this group right now is not doing the search, they're not looking at applicants. They're simply like weighing in on what they think the process should look like.
And that's what this report is gonna be.
And the report is gonna be, hey, we think that you should do this and we think that a superintendent should have these qualities.
Just quickly, could I get a name of the firm that that is uh?
I think it's the Lower Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is the one that um. The one that was contracted and they subcontracted for a portion of it. To this company called Great Schools Partnership, but the, the vendor that we're using for this process. Is the Lower Pioneer Valley. Planning Commission.
They're stationed in Amherst, aren't they?
I don't, I honestly don't know where.
Mr. Wellahen.
I think there's like forty members. And yeah, so those, those names were, they came before the um, the full school committee to be approved. You know, so there was, you know, there was a, an outreach. For those participants, whoever wanted to participate. And forty or so names came back to the school committee and we adopted it as as a slate. It was a large group. I'm worried it was maybe a little too, too large. Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts? Okay, motion perhaps that this item be just received, it's a communication.
So moved.
Okay, mo- is there some, mo- motions been made and seconded that the item number three be considered received? All in favor? Okay, motion's been made and seconded to remove item number four off the table. Item number four is a copy of an order from Councillors Bartley and Vacan that the city consider. Installation of fla- of flashing crosswalk signals at two crosswalks. Proximate to Metcalf School, um, and this was sent over here to the joint committee to kinda track. How were there, how this is progressing, it also did go over to the DPW. All in favor of taking that off the table? Also moved, okay. Um, from the maker of the order, I will just mention hit this comment. Um, he said, not sure why City of Hoyok. Does not have these installed as it's one of the few schools in the city without them. I did send this as a copy to the joint committee for this reason, I'm hopeful for some feedback. As to date, I have received none. I'm pretty confident this committee will understand the need for the crosswalks. Um, but needless to say, you know, just drive by during the school day and you'll see why. It's quite busy, there's no crossing guards and um, Metcalf staff, as it turns out. Are basically serving as the crossing guard and that's not really their role, but they're doing it to, to basically protect the kids. And he, he asked the question, is that really the best use of Metcalf personnel's time? Uh, since there is no crossing guard there, so um. Anthony, I don't know if you would know anything about the status of this or, but could you speak to? How the children are safely getting across the street there at Metcalf?
Yeah, I mean, there is a crosswalk there, um, there's a, there, there never was a designated crossing guard there. Because we don't have a lot of students that walk to Metcalf. You know, uh, Metc- Metcalf, you know, most of the students were were bused there, so. Um, but the, you know, since rezoning, there, there definitely has been a little more walkers. And there's been a, an appetite to uh, put a car- crossing guard there unfortunately. Like, it's just hard to hire crossing guards, there, there's not a lot of them out there, they're, you know, two hour jobs. You know, um, you know, uh, three hours max, like you're doing a little bit of work before school and a little bit of work after school, so. It's not necessarily an easy job to fill. Um, so in the meantime, we do have, like, staff are happy to make sure kids are safe when they're crossing, so. Is it a good use of their time? Hell yeah, we wanna keep our kids safe.
And if you don't have a crossing guard, you have to make do. I mean, the ideal would be have a crossing guard, but if you can't get them, then then that makes perfect sense until we can get this fixed. Um, I'm not sure committee members what the best approach here is perhaps. You know, we keep an eye on this and ask the DPW perhaps? For a report as to status of this, does that make sense? Yeah, and I wanna recognize first that Counselor Israel Rivera has joined us, thank you Counselor Rivera. And I see Counselor Divine has her hand up, um, Patty, do you, do you have something you wanna ask?
Yes, if I could, um, it seems to me a couple of years ago, we, um, uh, the pole across, you know, where the crossing. Uh, is, there was something taped there with orange flags in there. Now, I don't know if that was because there was a crossing guard, but I don't know if any of you remember that. But it definitely was there, uh, it's not there any longer, so I don't know if the flags were stolen or what, but I, I specifically remember that.
So um, Jeffrey, is it possible if, we could table this again, but? Is it possible for you to get a report from the DPW? Um, as to just status and then we can just kinda maybe have that as to where we're at? And if it sounds kinda fuzzy, maybe for the next meeting, we'll put it on the agenda and invite Carl or another representative of the DPW to come in and. Debrief us where this is going, does that make sense, Jeff?
Sure, yeah, I can reach out to Carl tomorrow to see if he can provide any information and if. He feels a discussion would make more sense, yeah, we can talk about having him come in for the next one.
Thank you, Anthony.
I just wanted to name that whenever we have issues with like um, crosswalk infrastructure, so like the push buttons. It's usually the fire department that we have to call to come and troubleshoot it. So I, I think it would be wise in the essence of time to make sure that. You know, a representative from the fire department and DPW are there. I don't know who initially installs them and gets them ready, but I know when they're not working. Fire department's on it.
Yeah, Alarm Division, yeah, so Jeff, keep that in mind, we should maybe check in with the Alarm Division, but. My suspicion is they do the servicing, but the city actually puts them in through some contractor originally. And so since they don't have obviously anything there, that's kinda where we're at. Okay, probably, uh, yes, Mr. Collmore.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, why don't we, it's on our agenda right now. Why don't we just table it until we get a report back from the group, the Fire Department, the Board of Public Works?
That's exactly what I was gonna recommend, so thank you for bringing that up. Uh, motion to table? Alright, all in favor of tabling item four? Opposed?
Motion to move item five off the table.
And uh, let's see here, it might be a good idea if we do five and six as a package, is that okay?
Yep, five and six as a package.
Okay, um, motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to take item five and six as a package and remove them both from. Uh, the table, all in favor of that? Opposed, so moved. Item number five is a copy of the statement from Mayor Garcia and Superintendent Soto. Regarding a joint statement affirming the rights of immigrants. And then item six is an order that I had introduced at our last council meeting. Which re- requests that the superintendent of schools discuss his recent memo. On affirming the rights of immigrants with the joint committee of the city council and school committee. So this having been before us now, just wanted to talk to you, Anthony, if you would be kind enough to. Talk about your memo, talk about the school department's perspective, and I know the mayor had another perspective on it. Relative to civil detainers and the HPD and all of that piece, you, you obviously don't have to address that. That's off the table. Relative to your component, um, tell us about your statement. How you see this playing out, um, what you feel, what you're hearing, what you're feeling, the school department. Responses to this and then we'll just kinda take the discussion from there, thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to discuss, so first and foremost, like, the intent of my messaging. Um, we do have a significant amount of newcomer families, new to Hoyok, new to the district. Uh, my, my first intent was to just kinda ease some of their anxiety. I've had families come crying, I've had bus drivers actually like walking into central office crying, grabbing me, Mr. Soto. You know, um, the, this student Anthony that I always see, he wasn't in school today, like. I'm worried something happened and so first and foremost was to just help ease the anxiety of students and families. Because there's a lot of misinformation out there and concern and worry. Second is like, you know, we have a strong campaign to have attendance, like stronger attendance in schools. Our chronic absenteeism is, you know, almost fifty percent, which is way too high, that means more than. Around fifty percent of our kids are missing eighteen or more days, like, it's, it's hard to make the academic progress that we'd like to see when. When that many kids are missing that many days. And uh, we had been hearing heightened anxiety from these families too, like. Hey, I'm not gonna send my kid to school, like, I'm scared, like, what's going on? Um, so we wanted to just clarify with them what their rights are. We also needed to educate our staff, like, it is a legal requirement for us to educate all kids, it's a state legal requirement. That, you know, we don't collect immigration status documentation, so there's no way for our staff to know. Whether a, a, a fa- a newcomer family has a status or not, but we're not, you know, we're. It's not a requirement and, you know, um, we're not, we're not supposed to be collecting immigration status, work papers. Um, cause that's a barrier to enrolling a kid and that's, you know, that, that's the guidance that we received from. From Desi, uh, you know, and we wanted to let staff know, like, that, that's our, you know. We don't want staff getting in trouble, right? Like, let's, let's assume that us, ICE does come and they say, hey, I wanna see the. This student or these student records, like legally, you're not allowed to provide information about a kid unless it's their parent, right? So we didn't want, we wanted to avoid um, any type of confrontation like that and actually alarm, like, alert the staff, like. If something like this were to happen, here's what you're supposed to do. Um, and, you know, so that they don't get themselves in trouble, right? And, you know, uh, that, that's in a nutshell, what we wanted to do is, is let, let families know what was going on. Let our staff know what to do, you know, we, we did clarify with, with, you know, one of the things that we learned. After Desi released uh, their, their content. Uh, or their guidance was that we, we, we should be giving stronger guidance to our front office staff on what to do. Um, you know, families know that, it is my opinion, and I don't know this to be fact, that the majority of our newcomer families, they do have a status. Right? I know there's like this, this like widespread concern that like. It, they're illegal immigrants, right? And that they don't have a status or they're undocumented. You know, I, I, like, I don't know this to be fact, but like, I, you know, we've dealt with a lot of our newcomer families and they do have some. Some status that, that, you know, um, and some protections and we wanted to make sure that they understand what those are. We're not attorneys, right? So like. You know, we're, we're always encouraging our families who do have concerns to make sure they, they are like partnered up with. You know, either uh, an immigration attorney or however they got here, you know, uh, whoever they're working with. On, on their status, that they're, they're regularly communicating with them and asking them tho- those questions. We don't want our staff members doing that, right? Cause, you know, like, hey, you have somebody that you're working with, that's who you should be getting your advice with. You know, we're, we're trying to educate your kids and make sure they're here every day and support them, so. Um, there was a lot involved, but mainly easing anxiety, letting staff know how to handle it. And making sure these families knew their, their, their rights.
Makes perfect sense. Um, just a couple of questions, and again, the, some of this stuff is, comes to me by way of constituents or, or in my own regard. And, you know, just like, do you feel we have a quote unquote significant population? You don't collect this data, but do you think there's a significant population of quote unquote illegal immigrants or people? Or children of immigrants in the Hoyou schools? I don't know, is the state locating people here perhaps in motels from? Different countries and those folks are here or we have people from different cities that are getting bused into the city? Like, I'm just trying to garner, is this even a significant issue in the city in your estimation? I, as you know, the whole hoteling and sheltering issue is a, is a major issue um, statewide. It's obviously a very expensive issue and the state's trying to figure out how they're gonna deal with it going forward. And I'm just wondering, is that come really in a large measure to ours, to our door here?
It was, you know, I had been hearing about this for a few years now. Like, we had been hearing like a lot of families showing up from Haiti, a lot of families showing up. From um, from um, Afghanistan. And, you know, frankly, up until this year, like, that, that, that Hoyok hadn't been impacted. I think last year we had maybe, you know, seven or ten families. This year, for sure, we've seen a lot of uh, newcomers, you know, I, and and again, I don't know. What their immigration status is, but we, we do have a significant amount of new. but we, we do have a significant amount of newcomers. Like, like for comparison, it's over a hundred this year.
By way of from seven to 10 families to maybe a hundred?
Over a hundred.
Over a hundred.
Yeah, so.
What do you, what do you, uh, attribute that to in your opinion? That's like 10x.
I just, you know, I, I, I can't, I don't know what I attribute it to. Like, I think that, uh, other communities are.
They've moved into Holyoke or?
They're living in Holyoke. Yeah, we're, you know, the, the only way we can educate their kid is if they're live, enroll in Holyoke.
Are they living in like motels in town or hotels or?
Some. I know that, you know, there's some shelters, there's some doubled up with maybe families that were already here. You know, and so it's, you know, we have a, a wide variety of, of newcomer fam. We've actually had to open up a new program, um, for, you know, it's not just, you know, our Haitian community. We, we've gotten some from Latin American, uh, speaking, you know, Spanish speaking communities. So, um, we, we happen to have a great dual language program that helps support those kids. And then, uh, in the middle school grades and then for, uh, for kids that are not in middle school or not Spanish speaking, you know, we've created a newcomer program. We've, we have somebody who, uh, helps translate and connect families. Um, I definitely know there's, there's some families working, we, we saw a large amount of families working with the Catholic charities, which is a refugee or, uh, they, they, I guess there's a refugee program that they're, they're running a grant. It's a federal grant, uh, and they, you know, they part, show up there and they try to find placement for you in, you know, sometimes in a hotel that has a kitchenette. Like there's requirements that it has to have. Um, and we happen to have one of those.
Hold on, I'm, I'm almost done. Um, one of the concerns is from some is the whole financing of all of this. Now, wh- cause what I'm, or what I point out to people is they'll say, well, hold on a minute. If people aren't here legally in the country and they're, it costs money to educate students, who's paying for all this, right? It's not coming out, like you get reimbursed from the state for these hundred families that come in, right?
Yeah, I think the, the biggest impact for us is probably, um, you know, we've had to, we hired a, uh, kind of a, a support para last year. So we had already done that for the seven to 10 families that, that spoke Haitian Creole and, and like, you know, imagine somebody coming to school and the teacher's speaking and you don't understand what the teacher's saying. We need, we need, we needed somebody to help support and help connect the families with whatever resources are available. Uh, the funding is actually lags a year. So if they were, if they were a student on October 1st, we actually get funding for them, not, not this year because, well, this, for next year's budget, we would. And then there's some like McKinney Vento funding that you get for, if, if they're homeless. Um, I don't want to, you know, so it, it, it does lag a year. And there's, there is some resources that are allocated towards it. I think the biggest ones are, are probably transportation.
To us. So, you know, obviously some are concerned that is the state adequately doing what it's share? Cause you know, it seems that the state, for whatever reasons they do, you know, and this is obviously a very contentious issue, um, they some feel like, you know, we want to be a sanctuary state and we want to tell the whole world to come to Massachusetts or other states like California or what have you. And we'll house you, we'll feed you, we'll whatever, but that does come at a price. And it seems that Washington was funding that for a period of time or subsidizing that. Now, the concern some have is that there's other people in charge of Washington now and that, that money's going to dry up. So if we maintain these same policies, the question is, who's going to pay the bill? Is it going to be, the state is going to reimburse Holyoke to pay for all these costs? And if that's true, then it's more of a Boston problem, right? Cause we're just doing what we have to do. If the rules are, we take everybody and they're going to give us the money and we're going to do it, then we soldier on. But my question is, if the state is going to set policies that says come one, come all from across the world and we're going to take care of you here in, in Massachusetts, that's great, provided Boston's going to say, here's the check. Now taxpayers have a, they might have an exception with the governor having those policies, but that's beyond the scope of Holyoke, right? Massachusetts taxpayers set those policies every two or four years in the state election. So I'm not going to get into that. But as far as my bailiwick here, which is Holyoke and how Boston decisions fund Holyoke, I just want to make sure this isn't an unfunded mandate from Boston that says, hey, we've invited everybody, but, and we want them to come live in your motels or your shelters. But oh, by the way, we're not actually going to give you the money to educate these children. So, um, I want to make sure that the money and the rhetoric are following each other is, is my point. So that's what I'm kind of wanting to make sure that we're tracking that. Cause as you know, transportation is already a big bill and that's paid for locally, right? Cause that's not reimbursed. It doesn't count towards minimum net school spending, I don't believe. And it's always been a, that's escalating exponentially. And now if that means we got a Holyoke taxpayers who, uh, just had a massive tax increase and we're trying to keep body and soul together here, now are not going to be reimbursed by the state for a hundred more kids that have to be transported around, you know, that isn't free. And, and that's my point. So I don't know if you want to address, I think you see where I'm going with that question.
Yeah, I mean, uh, one thing I'll say, and I, and I don't want to imply that every newcomer family is McKinney Vento family, but, um, if they are in a shelter, if they are in a hotel, they would qualify for McKinney Vento status. So in that scenario, um, you know, close to a hundred percent of the McKinney Vento transportation is reimbursed. So your expense would go up, which is going to happen this upcoming year. And the city council will probably get some sticker shock from that. In transportation, but like for every dollar that that goes up, right now it's fully reimbursable through the McKinney Vento reimbursement. Like, I don't know that, you know, that is going to stick with, you know, the federal government and the impact that that's going to have on state funds. Uh, but as it stands right now, we get close to a hundred percent reimbursement. So you got like, uh, when I go through the budget process, you never see the revenue part of it. Like I know, I'm sure you guys get an opportunity to do that. But, um, you know, when we estimate McKinney Vento transportation, which is right now a million dollars, if it's going to be 1.4 million dollars, then you should see, uh, on the revenue side, 1.4 million dollar. So the net is, you know, off, um, and then, and then as far as like everything else, like I'm sure that the state is, you know, supporting families with like, you know, I know the, the program that I just talked to you about through the Catholic charities, they provide funding to those families like a stipend for 90 days, um, three months. Uh, and they try to help them get work and do different things. But it is, you know, a 90 day program, right? Like after that 90 days, like what, I don't know what, where somebody's families go or, you know, um, or anything like that. Um, as, as far as funding goes, you know, they just become students like every other student in Holyoke Public Schools or a student that moves from Springfield to Holyoke, from Chickopee to Holyoke. You know, it lags a year. You get the per pupil rate from the state. Um, the, if they're enrolled by October 1st, you get that in your chapter 70, uh, revenue the following year. Um, it does lag a year though, right? So if families join October 2nd, then like, you know, we won't see that until the following year, assuming.
They're still here.
Assuming they're enrolled on October 1st.
Got it, got it. Um, Mr. Grani?
Just two, two things quickly. McKinney Vento also states that you have to provide transportation for any Hoyok Public School student. A choice student that's from out of town too, you have to provide door to door. I believe, or for many students that is coming into Hoyok, you have to provide transportation door to door as well. Uh, the second issue is with bilingual education. Supposing you have a family from the Middle East and the, the family speaks Farsi. You have to provide a Farsi language teacher for that individual student. Now, I would assume that it would be pretty difficult to find in the city of Hoyok and there could be a myriad of different students coming in from different countries where you're going to have to provide the staff to provide whether it's one student or whether it's 20 students, which is a substantial amount of money, if you can find the person.
Yeah, we don't, I mean, we don't, you know, if a student speaks Farsi, we don't hire a Farsi teacher. Like our goal is to teach them English, right? Um, and we provide them the support that they need through, you know, we do have like some translation and interpretation services, just like the city council does. Um, they have it in Spanish, but we, we have had to increase the amount of, uh, translation and interpretation supports for these families. Um, so.
It still comes under bilingual education, bilingual education law.
Yeah, but they're sitting in classrooms, you know, they're sitting in classrooms with everybody else. The teacher's not, not, you know, teaching in Farsi.
But you do have to have somebody that speaks the language to, to interpret that for the student.
Yeah, we do provide them with support. It's not always live, like a person sitting there. Um, they, they often, they, sometimes they get support. So the, the newcomer academy that we have at, at STEM, you know, uh, we, we try to, so they get intensive support on learning the English language, learning, you know, the culture here, uh, before they're just like immersed into, uh, you know, the, the gen ed. Uh, so they, it, you know, they get to talk to each other, they get to hear from each other and, and learn a little bit before they're fully immersed into gen ed. But you're right, there's some costs associated with it, but I don't want to, you know, we could have seven different languages. That doesn't mean we're going out and hiring seven different teachers that speak those languages. We, you know, they're, they're in classrooms with everybody else and we get them the support they need. We did because we had such a, um, such a large population, uh, that spoke Haitian Creole. We were able to identify, uh, a paraprofessional that helps with these students and helps.
But you do need a translator. You need somebody that speaks the language.
Yeah, and there's technology for that now. Doesn't have to be a, you know, a, a person sitting there with the student.
Uh, Mr. Wellhahn?
Thank you. Thank you for the, uh, handouts. Yeah, I was just, you know, I went through them and it's really a daunting, you know, program. You know, just in terms of the do's and don'ts, um, you know, that, that your staff has to administer and know the rules. So, you know, I'm just going through, I just highlighted just the discrepancies and all these. I'm not going to bore you with the whole program, you know, there's no, you know, hi- you know, highlight, you know, may not prevent, may request, must admit, sponsors, 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 you know, it's, it's just, it just puts it on, you know, just a huge burden on your staff, you know, I'm just worried about what my colleagues said. Um, um, in terms of, uh, the costs associated with it, the amount of training that you had to provide your staff in terms of learning the regs on this, you know, I'm assuming there was a big, a big, um, learning curve on that. You know, really just, you know, just the bottom line, just looking at these directives on the, you know, the Justice Department, Department of Education. It's just, you know, this is the, the direct result of a failed immigration policy, okay? And it trickles down to the local level, you know, in terms of, you know, the services, you know, that, you know, we have to provide, which is fine, but just the amount of staff and unpaid liabilities, yes or no? We're not sure about that. It's really just not fair for, for you really and your staff to really have to, you know, put the burden of this program on, on our schools.
Yeah, I mean, our, our teachers are great. Our teachers love these kids and they're doing the best they can to support them and, and get them to learn. Like that's the goal.
Do, do you inva- uh, uh, let's put it this way, this is such a fluid situation at this point, right? I think everyone's trying, as you even articulate in here, you know, this is, you're trying to gather. And I think people at the state level, federal level, local level are trying to figure out where this is all going. I would say keep us posted. I think one of the things that I get concerned about is, um, depending on, we're so reliant on Washington for so much federal assistance on different things. And I can only imagine in the schools, what, what percentage of your budget is made up of federally supported funds? You know, uh, I don't know where this is going to go. So it's, I'm just taking a whole wait and see, but what if they came out with a policy that said, you know, no federal funds if you don't do X, Y, and Z, you know, and, and then where are we, right? And, but if that happens, we'll be looking for another memo from you as to where, where we're going with, with all of this. And certainly keep, you know, your city council, the mayor, obviously he's on the school committee, but, uh, your school committee members, all of us debriefed if, if it goes anything like that and, and that kind of direction. Cause I, my gut tells me there's going to be a lot of those kind of conversations going forward. Um, it just feels like that, you know, as, as this develops over 2025, it, you know, between the Congress and the executive actions. And there, there's a proposal to eliminate the Department of Education completely, right? That's, that's on the table.
Yeah, I hope that doesn't mean eliminate the funding that they're providing.
The talk is to send it back, like block grants back to the states. I, you know, you know, would, would that be the same formulas? What would Boston do? Maybe we make up better, who knows? You know, maybe Boston's more favorable than what Washington would give us. I don't know. If they just got a check, um, I don't know. Right, yeah, I mean, we're, we're, the expectation is we're taking care of the children, we're taking care of the issues, we need the resources to do the job. So, um, and in the most efficient way, obviously. So, uh, it'll be, it'll be really interesting. So, um, I would just say, keep us posted, keep us posted on this issue. Any of these major state and federal changes, um, we, we appreciate hearing from you and, and, uh, your guidance on it. All right, uh, any other questions or thoughts? Uh, okay. Um, motion that items five and six have been complied with?
Moved.
Okay, all in favor? So moved, okay. That takes care of those.
Item seven off the table.
Yep, motion is, um, you know, we maybe could even do eight? Two with it, you think? Cause one's about the headquarters, one's about all the other public schools. So maybe a motion to do seven and eight as a package, is that okay? All right. Uh, motion's been made and seconded to take seven and eight as a package. All in favor of that? Oh, so moved, okay. Let me just read these. Item number seven is a communication from, uh, Sean Mangano from the school commit, uh, department. This is a report he released to the finance subcommittee of the school committee back in December. Uh, there's a chart that we'll go over in a moment. And item eight is an order that was introduced by myself and Counselor Vacan, uh, which, and she's here this evening. The superintendent of schools, please update the joint committee on city council and school committee on any updated plans for the school department headquarters in light of their decision not to go forward with the proposed High Street location. So, uh, let's talk about the, before we do eight, we'll do seven. So I want to just, if that's in people's package, I want to, um, and for our folks at home, uh, there was a facility inventory done. It says it's comparing our various school buildings and facilities from Central Supply to all of the different schools on a number of metrics. Uh, from the roof down to generators, rates when the buildings were built, uh, discuss their last major addition or renovation date. It did a survey of where we stood in 2019, flashing ahead five years. It then surveys kind of where we're at today. And, um, I guess to kick off the discussion, let me say for where things stand today, Central Supply looks like there's some definite question marks on that one. Looks like they, they rated certain things urgent, in particular windows and roof were listed as an urgent need of help needed. Uh, let's see, um, Hoyok High North, um, is got a poor, a roof rating as poor. Kelly School is rated as having a poor roof. Dean is rated as having poor doors. McMahon is rated as having a poor roof and poor playgrounds. MedCaf is rated as having poor doors and poor playground. Morgan School was rated as having a poor playground and Sullivan is rated. And Sullivan is rated as having a poor boiler and furnace. So those were anything that rated as either an urgent need or a poor need. Oh, I also failed to mention Lawrence School is rated as having an urgent need for a new generator. So those are the sort of poor and urgent, Anthony, can you kinda take us as to what's the plan of attack? Uh, to address those, oh, by the way, I'll mention in finance, we had a good meeting. To approve about a half a million dollars in, um. Schematic design work for a number of buildings, Sean Sheedy was in here the other night for that. We also approved some other resources for the schools, um, which escaped me at the moment.
Yeah.
Um, so can you talk, how are you addressing the poor and urgent here and what's your overall thoughts on this report?
Yeah, I think realistically, I, I, I just think this is a very nice report and it reflects. You know, I, I feel like the city council needs to pat themselves on the back because, you know, uh, you can see that. Back in, you know, the old way that it looked in the heat map, there was a lot of orange, a lot of red, a lot of yellow.
Yep.
And you can see our current state, there's a lot more green, and that's thanks to the, the city council's support and. You know, when, whenever we, we've needed you to support, you know, getting our facilities up, you guys. All responded in a positive way and we wouldn't see all this green. Um, had it not been for the city council's support, the MSBA's support. And us just really staying on top of, uh, like taking care of things that have been neglected for, you know, twenty, thirty years, like we've been. You know, this is a, a, a small part of a larger capital plan that we're putting together. Uh, I just shared it with the school committee on Monday, uh, we're gonna be having conversations at the next finance and operations subcommittee meeting. But it, it really isn't a test, it, it's a test, testament to like all of the hard work that went into making sure that we're ma- maintaining our buildings. And not just neglecting them, them like they have been neglected, you know, um, for, for many, 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 many years. Um, so, this is, this actually helps inform. Development of a capital plan, you can see that, you know, we needed a generator, we needed, we need to think about a roof. For central supply, we need to think about windows like, and, and those poor areas, you can see McMahon was like all poor. Back then and you could see that we've switched a lot of those poor ratings to, to good ratings, uh, that was through. Our, our statement of interest, they just got new doors, new windows, um, we, we were able to actually. And, and I'm not sure if you've received the communication yet, uh, um, we were able to, remember we came to you guys. Uh, in emergency, like McMahon boiler replacement, we're not gonna need that because we were able to include that on the IVAC grant. Um, and which we've committed to the committee, like we're, we need this now, it's an emergency, but we're gonna work. Really hard to try to not need it and that we're in that position now, we just got approval yesterday to get the new boiler over at, um. And we're using our own grant funds, uh, to do that, so, um, I really, the, the, like, I, I'll, I'll be happy to share the full capital plan. Once, once it goes through the school committee, um, but, but that's what this is, it's a, it's a picture, an inventory, like. Here's where we're at, and if we had to put a capital plan together, like, like where do we start? And, and this is a good heat map that allows us to, to do that.
Well, uh, the first, first thing I'm just gonna say out of the box is, you know, you're doing a lot of things really well, but, um. Your focus on making sure the physical structure and these type of maintenance and capital things, I know has been a, a. In particular for you, uh, an important priority and I, I really appreciate, uh, your attention to this and addressing it. And trying whenever possible to come up with a, a fiscally responsible way to do it, um, I thought in particular. Your use of the Esser funds and pursuing that was excellent. Uh, this great news we got from Sean the other night at finance about IVAC, which you've repeated here, you know, I, I appreciate that. Cause you know, and we at city council, thank you so much for your compliments, we, we do, cause we are really supportive of what. You need to do on a capital, uh, perspective, um, sometimes that don't make the sting any easier, but we know that these are buildings and like any building. We have to reinvest in them, we have to keep them up because, just like our homes, you know, you, you don't. You'll pay for it eventually, if, but you don't maintain your home, right, and you end up paying a lot more. Uh, fold and, and you have been one not to kick cans down the street and I appreciate that, I know the whole city council. Does and we're very thankful for your service in this regard and you're taking a proactive approach. Um, and going after these, these grants, so this, this news about IVAC, I think is very indicative of. You being very sensitive to the financial struggles of this community and, um, we're very thankful for you for doing that. And, uh, and, and you know, it, it makes this a lot easier of a process, so thank you, Anthony, we, we do appreciate it and, um. So, as we look at some of these, um, ones that are now poor or urgent. Um, what, how do you see this playing out, and I know this half a million that we just approved for schematic design. Um, how do you, how do you see this rolling out, say, over the next five years? Um, to address these urgent and poor and what can we do to support you?
I think that, so like, really, this is gonna be used for a capital plan and the capital plan. Like, we are gonna jump at every opportunity we can, like, you know, in our capital plan, you'll see that like one point. You know, uh, on average, like, we plan on spending about a million dollars chipping away at some of these things. Um, you'll see that like we plan on going after, uh, going to the MSBA and doing, as you mentioned yesterday. To address some of these things and, you know, it might mean for some of the playgrounds going after CDBG. Or going after, uh, CPA, like we're, we, you know, I've always made it a practice that, you know, when you go to towns usually. Or when you go to other communities and they talk about budget, it's usually the general fund budget, right, but. You know, I've, I've been lucky enough to work with some great people in Springfield that, that had me thinking out the box, like. You can't just look at the general fund, you have to look at the whole picture, and when we look at this capital plan, we're, we're looking at the whole picture. How can we fix the playground at Lawrence, how can we fix the playground at McMahon? Like, we can't put it in our operating budget, but do we, can we go to the city and ask them to do it? Uh, can we go after the CPA funds, can we go after CBDG funds? Is there, is there an IVAC grant out there to address this, you know, when we wanna upgrade the security cameras, is there security grants out there? So we really, you know, and, and to your point, like, I, I understand the financial struggles of this city. So, uh, when I'm coming to the city asking for support, it's usually my last resort.
Yep.
Um, be- that, we've tried other things and there's just no other option than to. Throw it out there, and if you guys don't know it's a need, then like, you'll, like, how are we ever gonna get it done?
That's right.
So I'm hoping that this capital plan actually allows us to express our needs. Um, and, uh, you know, I'm gonna share it with the school committee, it's a living, breathing document, like, we, it's. It, we're calling it a five-year capital plan, but, you know, things come up, right, and, and like, we learn new things and, eh, and it's. We're always gonna be adding to that, and, you know, sometimes we won't, we won't be able to convert some of these oranges and they'll just have to. Stay in poor shape and our, our facilities team will do the best they can to keep them there, but at least we know that. We'll at least know what the needs are and people in this community will know what the needs are. Um, and the city council will know what the needs are, so that it's not just this oops, like, we should have thought about this. Yeah, like, I, 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 I don't like surprises.
No, we, we have those from time to time.
Oh, we do.
They're usually like, you know, maybe a, a nine-year uninspected elevator at the garage or something, you know, there's, there's sometimes. We have those from time to time, um, and we appreciate no surprises, uh, Mr. Wellhahn.
Thank you, yeah, um, thank you for this, yeah, this, um, um, report was first brought to the attention of the committee. Um, we changed the name of our committee from, um, um, the finance subcommittee to finance and operations. Okay, so, these are the type of items that we want brought to our attention to make sure that there's ongoing maintenance. Um, Mr. Commer serves with me on that committee, he's been a proponent for years, in my year. For ten years and then, um, in terms of getting the schools funded. Um, proportionally, to make sure that, that there's ongoing maintenance, so, this is really proof that. You know, what Mr. Soto and his, his, his team has done, the two Shans, I call them, in terms of having a plan, the capital plan. To make sure that the buildings are, you know, um, are maintained going forward, you know, they, you know, the. The truth that matters is, you know, these schools are old, okay, I mean, built in the twenties, you know, nineteen fifty-two, nineteen sixty-four. Nineteen sixty-one, so, I mean, they're, they're older facilities, the newest one is Dean Tech, okay, that was built in the eighties. Okay, I was in high school then, so they're older facilities, maintaining them is, is hard, um, I was watching a. S- um, meeting for the Amers Regional, um. Uh, school committee, they were talking about their deferred maintenance and their schools, okay, so. So, it's really not just Hoyoke, just the cost of maintaining these facilities, you know, with the inflation, you know, just, just to. Put a new roof on, okay, it's just, you know, it's just, it's just gotten out of control, we have too many schools, Mr. Soto would, would sort of. Agree with that, so hopefully, when the new middle school is built, maybe we can condense some of these schools, close them, use it for other purposes. So we can kinda have a better, um, financial plan, you know. Less schools and then we'll have more money for, for the ones that we're maintaining, but, um, again, I just wanna thank Mr. Soto and his team. For putting this together and, um, I know when, uh, Mr. Commer. Always bugged, bugged me about the cost of the, the facilities, you know, we always, um, refer to this, thank you.
Mr. Green.
Just, just quickly, is that gonna be ready for September?
Yes.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, we, we, we're excited, um, I'm actually going to tour it on, um. Tomorrow, see, see the progress and my plan is, once the weather gets nice, to have an open invitation to. Um, the building committee and any city counselors that wanna go check it out, but we want the weather to get a little nicer, less muddy, less wet. Um, so that, but it's coming along nicely, we're excited, so our Metcalf Middle School and then our STEM students from. That are located in Dean will be attending that school, um, in the fall.
That's a good thing.
It is.
Anybody else like, uh, everybody's all set? Okay, uh, all right, so, uh, we talked about an item seven, so now on item eight, the headquarters, so just by way of level setting. Um, as you recall, there was, um. Last spring-ish, I'm gonna say, um, maybe March-ish, April-ish, uh. The plan was the building diagonally across from City Hall here, there was a desire. Um, to purchase that building for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um. We were going, the fina- it was in finance, I believe we were going through the due diligence process. There was discussions about we were gonna do tours, we were gonna, you know, um, I believe, um, Margaret. Wood had come and did a slide deck presentation and the city council was being told this is the direction we should, you know, go in and. So we were going through the due diligence process about maybe, is it fair to say maybe four to six weeks into that? Um, a decision was decided not to move forward with that and then, so we effectively, you know, let it go. I did point out that recently in mid-December, there was an auction of the building and. I believe it was December eleventh, tenth and the eleventh, um, they had a minimum bid of a hundred and fifty thousand for the building. And at that time, no one bid a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the building. So, um, as far as I know, there has been no sale completed on that building to date, um, so. We wanted it for eight fifty, then it went on the market for, I guess we could have bought it for one fifty. Uh, but we still, at that point, didn't want it, so obviously it looks like we're totally not interested in that building anymore. Um, so I guess from that perspective, it's a good thing that we changed courses, cause if it wasn't worth eight fifty. I mean, if it wasn't worth one fifty, it sure wasn't worth eight fifty, right, so we saved, uh, a significant amount of money for taxpayers in that process, so. Having said that we're not doing that, and of course, we're still at fifty-seven Suffolk Street for. I mean, are we into what, third or fourth decade at this point there, in one incarnation or another? You did allude in your initial report about perhaps other options, maybe a piece going to Dean somewhere here. There's been discussion about maybe other buildings coming offline. Where, where is this conversation going from your perspective? And, and, and what are, what, where, where are we going from a leadership perspective as to the, uh, to the headquarters?
Yeah, uh. Honestly, like. I wanna say in twenty seventeen, I had made a recom- or, we put a working group together and made a recommendation that. Fifty-seven Suffolk be purchased, you know, the return on investment was, you know, undeniable at the time.
Right.
And, you know, just no action was taken and we've been just staying put, you know, we're not, we're not entirely happy with. The condition of that facility and, you know, it, it has changed ownership and, um. You know, there, there haven't been really much improvements to that, but, you know, as, you know, we're, we're tough, we're holy okers, we're, we. I'll work out of my car if I have to, you know, but, um, you know, our staff have, have, you know, while they don't love the space, like they're making do. With it and we're, we plan on staying there until, you know, I, you know, unless the city council and the mayor are saying. We need you out of there, we need, you, we want you to explore a space, um, that's what, and why this conversation always comes up. Because I know that that has been, you know, a conversation that comes up and now we just put this working group for Metcalf together. And their recommendation is that we explore possibly, you know, instead of having, if you remember correctly. In twenty seventeen or sixteen, when I did make the recommendation to purchase the building. We had been renting, uh, five floors at the time. And. What my recommendation was, hey, let's buy the building. But in the meantime, we'll consolidate from five floors to two and cut the rent in half, and we did that. And that's where we've been for the last, you know, seven years.
And the rent is approximately about two fifty a year?
It was three twenty when I got here.
Okay.
And it's about one sixty.
One sixty?
One sixty-five now.
Sixty-five, okay.
When I got here, it was three twenty, cause we were renting five floors, you know, people weren't happy, there was offices, like, we have. Call it the fishbowl, right, like, we have some academic directors there that, you know, if, if they need to take a call, they gotta go to a conference room. Because you can hear every, you know, so, um. Where we're at right now, the, the Metcalf Working Group made a recommendation for us to explore possibly using Dean as an option to. Move some of the offices over there, maybe consolidate to one floor, so that it's just the first floor. And families still have access to City Hall and the school department right there, um, or, uh, you know. So, what I'd like to do or what I, what, what they're recommending is that we actually have. Uh, a consultant come in and kinda map out what that would look like, what it would cost. Um, similar to what I did in twenty sixteen, when, when I did it the first time, we got a consultant, costed everything out, we looked at. You know, eight different options and had a, a, a recommendation that one of the options be explored. Um, I know the city council couldn't, can't take action unless, you know, unless it's brought forward and I think that that's what happened, no, no. Real action was taken at the time, um, but we're, we're ready to go through that process again and explore it and. You know, until then, we gotta, we, we're, we're assuming we're just gonna stay put and not, not get kicked out.
So, uh, just to push back a little bit, maybe pushback's a little strong of a word, but what happened? Um, like, we were going, i- if, we had a whole presentation, there was options, right?
Yeah.
Going to Dean was not on the table.
Are you saying in sixteen?
No, I'm talking a year ago.
You're talking a year ago, the building was sold, so it wasn't even an option for us to buy it, and that's what happened between when we met. And, like, it was under sale, it was under agreement, so that's.
Didn't end up getting sold.
But it didn't get up, end up getting sold.
Okay, so, um.
I don't know, I, I honestly don't know, but I know that, like, what, my conversation, I was informed. Oh, hey, that building's no longer on the market, like, it's under agreement, I just heard from the landlord, so I was like, okay, well, you know, we'll stay put and.
Okay.
And then I did get an email from you that it was up for auction, but, you know, I, I have no. And then I did get an email from you that it was up for auction, but, you know, I, I have no, I have no ability to. Put a bid on that, right? Like, it, you know, that.
Well, yes, but I would assume, you know, you could go or whoever is representing you to go. And have this conversation that, you know, if this is truly what we wanted to do. Okay, maybe that came off the track, but now you're back on the track that. At a considerable savings, if that in fact, but I don't know, maybe in the end, it was just decided that that was not the best move.
Yeah.
When it was all said and done, but when we looked at the three options, if you recall, it was there. Buying fifty-seven Suffolk Street or, um, Metcalf, right? Those were the A, B, and the C, and that's pretty much what the three options that were outlined in the presentation.
Yeah.
And so my question is, like, A didn't happen, B didn't happen, C didn't happen. Now, we, now we're talking about a D, but we don't even know if we'll do D, and now we're back to do nothing. And I guess my point is.
Well, I'm not saying do nothing, like, I'm saying.
There's no, but I'm saying, like, there's no. There's no, uh, inertia to actually make a decision to now do. It, it was like, critical mass was attained last year that we're making a decision. The present state is not a good enough decision, we need to move forward. So leadership made a decision to do something, to, to, to move forward. Now we're back to, we don't know what we wanna do, right? And it's, but that, my concern is, that's been the play for. Your predecessors for umpteen years before you, and now we're here again. That we don't know what we wanna do, and I just, I guess I'm at a point where if you're in a building for thirty or forty years. At some point, you have to form an opinion and make a decision to move forward and it's like. It's, so then I, I, either we hadn't really. Been firm in these A, B, and C a year ago, right? That we're now back to nothing, and so like, what happened? Like, how does the train get back on the tracks to move forward?
I disagree that there was, like, in twenty sixteen, I did make a recommendation, like.
Which I agreed with, by the way.
Like, I don't, I don't know why no action was taken then. I thought it was the right thing to do.
Cause the mayor didn't wanna do it, that's why.
Okay.
So that, that's the answer.
So then, like, you know, ideally, like, you know, we gotta, you know, I, I, I don't. I'm looking for direction on if, like, we could absolutely.
Part is, we're looking for direction from you, you're the boss, like.
Yeah, and, and when I brought forward that this was a good option, nothing happened, right?
Okay, so that was plan B, so does that mean if A falls through, we go to B and now?
Yeah.
Are you lobbying the mayor to do B and?
I am.
And we're waiting for him to, to deci- to make a decision? I guess one of my point is, I can see this, if we don't catch ourselves here.
Yeah.
That we're gonna go a couple more years of sort of figuring it out and then, you know, cause that's what happened. From all these years up until last year, when we looked like we were at a decision point. And now we're back to sort of in the wilderness again.
Yeah.
Uh, let me, let me comment here.
Okay, Mr. Green.
Um, with the movement into the new PEC school. That should take some existing city properties, city-owned buildings at this point, whether they're school buildings or whatever. To move the school department headquarters out of the rent-paying situation. Uh, I think that generally the flavor of most of the members on the committee is to move the operation. Into an existing school building. I mean, I don't wanna make light of the fact, but I don't know if that fifty-seven Suffolk Street elevator. Is still like riding an amusement park up to the sixth floor. Because.
Better than the annex elevator, I think.
It's horrendous and the, the access for somebody in a wheelchair.
Yeah.
If they're ever on that sixth floor and that, that fire comes up that stairwell, you're gonna have a lot, a lot of dead bodies up there. That's, that's a dangerous situation. I know that the, the building isn't condemned or anything like that, but I'm sure that the fire department should take a look at that. Because if the fire comes up, it's gonna come up the stairwell. And if the elevator isn't working, you've, you've got a bunch of people that are up on that sixth floor, we gotta, we gotta.
Yeah, there's a fire escape, it's not a, not a pretty fire escape, but it's.
I don't even know if they go down.
Yeah, it.
You know.
I hear you.
Fire escapes in the building, but they're rested, they don't even go down.
You know, the only reason we were ever looking for space back when I got here nine years ago was because the. In the budget hearing, I heard from the city council that they wanted us to move. We, you know, we put together a proposal, that never followed through, so we just stayed put. And then there was some interest in this building, so like, uh, I, I guess I'm looking, is, is, is there a desire from the city council? That like, we do move out of, of, of fifty-seven Suffolk? And if the answer to that is yes, then I can work and, and put a group together to evaluate. We just talked about Metcalf was coming offline because we're moving kids. But we'd like to move that program that we're currently leasing space for to that school. We, we know that two hundred and fifty kids are gonna be leave, vacating Dean. Um, and that's, that's the STEM middle school students and going to, which is why the, the Metcalf Working Group. Recommended that we look at that space for central office. Now, there's competing interests, right? If, if this community really wants us to grow Dean and offer more shops and have more students there. Then that's a competing, um.
Right.
That's, I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't even know the word to use, but that's a competing interest, right? Like, like, you wanna grow Dean, but if we move central office there, we might not have the ability to do that as much, right? So, I'm, I'm looking to explore what that could look like, what it would cost and design it out. And then hopefully come up with a recommendation sometime next year. If, if in fact, the city wants us to do that, so I'm asking the city council and the, and the mayor, like, do you want me to explore that? And if the answer is yes, we will explore it. If the answer is like, no, we'd rather, we'd rather see Dean grow. Or we'd rather you stay put, then we'll stay put and make do with, uh, where we're at. But that's gonna come again at a cost of like, continuing to pay this, this lease.
You know, I know, you know, I'm not speaking for the entire city council.
Right.
But a lot of residents are also, for many, many years, have said, why are you paying rent in a fifty-seven Suffolk Street?
Yeah.
And you get the calls all the time, why are you paying? My, my option, personally, I feel we should be able to find a spot. In a city, an already city-owned building. I, I think that the city of Hoyok is probably the only city in the western Massachusetts. That pays rent for their school department offices, most of them are in public buildings.
No, that's not, I mean, Springfield pays s- seven hundred thousand dollars to rent the central office that they're in right now. Granted, they have a lot more money.
I wasn't aware of it.
But they're renting fifteen fifty Main Street, I know because I managed their budget for many years.
Westfield, West Springfield.
I, I mean, I don't know, I just know the, the district that I came from is renting their, their, their space, their central office headquarters. But, um.
To me, it doesn't seem to be.
They, they've prioritized, you know, they wanted, like, they wanted to have a nice facility for. Central office where families can go and all that, I don't, you know, not to say we haven't prioritized that, I'm just saying, like. That was a priority to the mayor at the time, he wanted, they were in the library on State Street one time. And that building was, I remember, I remember days when I worked there, if it got over ninety degrees, like. Staff had to go home early because of how hot that buil- and it sounded like a jet engine. When you walk in from all the fans going, that was my first, you know, my first couple of years. And the, the mayor at the time said, like, th- these aren't good working conditions, like, we need to find you a better space and, and. They figured it out.
Well, even if there is any city, it doesn't have to be a school building, any city-owned property that already is.
Yeah.
We own, that would be suitable, you know, a, a search for something like that.
Yeah, we could go through that process again, I'm, I'd, I'm happy to do that.
Well, you know. Uh, it's, it's just food for thought, it's something with the, with the new PEC school opening up. Because as Councilor Jordan said, this has been a bone of contention for, I don't know, thirty years, thirty, forty years. Or something like that, and it's, yeah, and it's unsettled.
It took me one year, coming here, putting a group together to make a recommendation. I wasn't in charge of like, taking action after that, and I'm not criticizing anybody, please. But like, while it's been an issue for thirty years, it took me like a year and a half to actually come up with a proposal, but. That, that then, somebody had to take the ball and run with that proposal. Now we're in a similar situation, I'm happy to do that again. Um, you know, uh, put a group of people together, get a consultant, take a look at options. If, it sounds like you're saying, don't just limit your option to Dean, like, look at other spaces, happy to do that.
Well, I don't know if the mayor, if the planning board or somebody has a city-owned property that, that.
Yeah.
That it could be used, a- as you say, which would be comfortable for parents, for the public to go in. I know that the Suffolk Street property is not really user-friendly for the entire community. In terms of parking, in terms of different.
Yeah.
Different situations like that.
Um.
I don't have the, I don't have the answers, obviously, if I had the answers, you know, I would give a recommendation, but I don't have the answers.
Yeah.
Co- Councilor Bacon had her hand up next, uh, Councilor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, my question is for Superintendent Soto. And I'm just interested in your opinion as our superintendent. Because it seemed to me that the study group that came up with the recommendation to purchase the building last year. That, that whole process is still a legitimate process. And that if High Street was seen as either the best option or the next best option to Suffolk. As was the old recommendation. Has your opinion changed from last year? Because if we could buy that building theoretically for a hundred fifty thousand. Where there was interest in buying it for eight hundred fifty thousand, I would think. We would be all over doing that to meet the needs of the school district. So having said that, my next question is, do you otherwise foresee? There will be some building within the school district because of the subsequent changes that would meet your needs? Or would you want the city council? If it was to come forth to us to support that High Street location, as was proposed last year? Your opinion?
Yeah, um, that's a, that's a tough question, uh, Councilor Bacon and, you know. I, you know, I, I've looked at fifty-seven Suffolk, I've looked at this building. And, you know, um, I think that the, the building across the street. I think that, that building, wh- i- if you're cons- if we are considering just purchasing that building. It is gonna need a significant amount of, it's not just the eight hundred thousand or the two hundred thousand, it's. You know, in the millions of like, up, upgrading it so that it, it, you know. You know, i- i- it could meet the needs of the school department, um, and, um. You know, I, I, I think that what I, in order to make an informed decision or opinion. Like, I would have to really like explore what the options are. Now Dean is an option because we're moving kids out of Dean, right? Like, there is space there that we could look at. I do think that, like, you know, as a, as a city council and as a school committee. And as, just as a city as a whole, like, we have about fifty, you know, sixty employees there. So I, I, you know, part of, part of the, what goes into consideration is a lot of these businesses rely on. You know, sixty of our staff members to eat lunch there and like, so I think all those, all those. All those factors need to be considered. Um, honestly, I've never had to think about any of this until I got to Holy Oak, like, the school department doesn't really. You know, think about their headquarters, the only reason it ever came up, because I know that it's been a conversation for many, many years. Um, you know, we don't. So, my, my opinion is that, um, if it is the desire of this community to get rid of that lease. Then, then I'd be happy to facilitate a, a thoughtful, like, analysis. And then that will inform what my opinion or would be to, to this body and to the school committee. Um, the last time I actually did that was, you know, in twenty sixteen.
Okay, well, I guess that's fair, um, and I guess what I'm hearing is. That upon further consideration, the amount of money that would have to be invested in the High Street building. Regardless of how much we paid for that building, seems like it would have exceeded any savings. We would have recognized from terminating the lease, that's how I'm.
I think eventually there, you know, there's a return on, uh, Councilor Jordan said it when. Like, I wish we made a decision on this twenty years ago, right? Like, if we bought fifty-seven Suffolk Street twenty years ago, we wouldn't even be having this conversation.
That's right.
We would, we, and, and the return on investment back in twenty sixteen was about. I wanna say it was five years, cause we were spending three hundred and twenty thousand, we could have got the building for a million.
Well, just.
And we did a study that said, over the next seven years, you're gonna spend, like, that building would have been already paid for and, like.
Right, to help prove.
Right.
To help.
And I, and I appreciate, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and to help prove your point, just a little factoid. Eric Schur recently purchased fifty-seven Suffolk Street and he paid about six hundred and fifty, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. For the building, okay? So, that's a pretty nice ROI when you've got right here, one tenant. We're paying them a hundred and sixty-five thousand a year, right? I mean, yeah, there's some operating expenses to the place, but, you know, what a lot of us had envisioned years ago. Cause I've been saying, purchase the building ages ago, right? Or take it by eminent domain, whatever, I mean, we had all the options that are, we could have, we've, we've talked about dealing with our annex, which is a problem, right? And we know we've had issues over there, so we, we needed overflow space there, we could have used, you could have had multiple floors. I mean, that long-term would have been the play, um, but now we're here and. But if we're just gonna keep doing this for ten more years, then, you know, I just don't wanna see that happen again. Um, I had Mr. Collmore and then. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Linda, yeah, do you have one final point?
Y- yes, um. I guess my point was this, and I'm just one person, I'm not trying to speak for anybody else. If we have a waiting list of over a hundred students that wanna get into Dean for the programming that Dean offers. I would not wanna see our central office taking up that space. When we could meet students' needs, which to me is our primary mission with our schools. If we could use some of the space without prohibiting, uh, classes. For students that wanna get this particular type of education, then I think it would be a win-win. But I'd sorta hate, I mean, I'd sort of like to have the students be able to have the option for that education. Because that was really the main mission of that school originally, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Collmore?
I'm gonna go back a few years, forty years ago, we discussed this. Forty years ago, we discussed this.
It was before my time.
And, uh.
Is there anything before your time?
I'm gonna tell you, we discussed this very closely and did lots of surveys and everything else. And our best option was because of school enrollment dropping. We had to close school. And the option was, let's close William Whiting School. You probably don't even know where William Whiting School is.
I, I do, but go ahead, yeah.
Okay.
Tessa and.
And, uh, utilize that as our school department offices.
Yep.
It belonged to us, the city of Hoyok, it belonged to us. There was no revenue taking place and you could walk from. William Whiting through the park, right here to City Hall to, to do, to do business and everything else.
Yep.
And before you knew it, before you knew it, without our school committee's consent or anything else. The mayor sold it to the Hoyok Catholic School. the mayor sold it to the Hoyoke Catholic School at that time. So I'm just gonna say, go going back forty, forty years ago, we had this on the table. And we're still paying all this terrible money utilizing a public building. I think there's some way a survey can be done, utilize some kind of public building for our school department offices.
Thank you. Madam President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just very briefly, sort of to summarize what I'm hearing, um, there's been multiple instances where things were presented. And the common theme is that it sounds like the mayor was the one who impacted both of the outcomes. Um, and I'm sure there's other cases that, um, this has happened. So, um, it does sound like, you know, to answer your question, I won't, I'm just speaking for myself on the council. But it sounds like there are perhaps new options compared to what existed in twenty sixteen. Um, and, you know, I I do agree with Councilor Bacon, um, that Dean probably isn't the best use. Um, so for whatever it's worth, I I think it could be a good idea to perhaps see if there's options that, um, we need to revisit or 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 bring up. That being said, um, it sounds like we wanna make sure that the mayor is also on the same page, because it is indeed the mayor who can uh impact this directly, so, um, yeah.
Yeah, but, um, I guess the takeaway is, um, make it a priority. And we would encourage, it sounds like you guys, uh, came and had a thoughtful approach a year ago. And don't let that go. Like, stay on it and come up with whatever the Plan B is. Talk to your school committee members, the mayor, everybody involved. And come forward with a solution, you know? And maybe the solution is, you know what, we're gonna stay here, and that's the permanent home. Then if that's, if fifty-seven Suffolk Street's gonna be the permanent home, then let's make that as the best option. And should we just keep renting? Should we buy it? Should we whatever? But we gotta do something. And what I don't wanna see is do nothing. And we don't have a, we need to make an informed, intelligent decision and move forward. So I would encourage you to, you know, over the next three to six months or whatever, to come back with a a plan that says we're doing X with this, you know? Is that, does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know about the three months part, but, um, definitely.
Well, I did say three to six, but uh.
But I heard three.
Okay, all right.
Uh, seems fair. Look, I'll I'll get a, I'll get a group.
Anthony, don't you agree, though, say the council didn't do its due diligence a year ago?
Yeah.
Say we all just said, rubber stamp, boom, and approve that. You'd be headed over there for eight fifty for something that now you could buy for peanuts, and you don't want it even for peanuts, so.
Hindsight's twenty twenty, though. We wouldn't have known that it it was, it would be sold for one fifty, you know, but yes.
No, but my.
Now I.
The reason, I guess, I'm giving you a shorter timeline now is, you had already made up your mind that we were gonna do X, Y, Z a year ago. So my, now that that hasn't happened, like, you guys already put all this thought and work and decision, like, how much, you know, how many more things, like, how many more months or years of study do we need to move forward? So I'm just saying, put it on an accelerated schedule to figure this out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I am hearing loud and clear that the, that this committee is still very much interested in exploring, eliminating that lease. And I will, uh, take that to heart, and I'll have a conversation with the mayor, we'll put a committee together, uh, try to involve as many, like, of the stakeholders that make the most sense. Um, we'll work with a consultant and come up with some options. And I hope that, I hope that all of that work is worth something, and it doesn't turn out to be, you know, twenty sixteen again where nothing happens.
Fair enough. Anyone else before we wrap up?
Once again, my preference, and once again, I'm only one member of a thirteen-member body, would be to house the school committee in an existing, an existing publicly-owned building.
Oh.
That's only my.
We'll, we'll, we'll take that into consideration as we move through that process. Like, that, that's, that's definitely, and we'll look at different options.
All right, uh, I think a motion to say seven and eight have been complied with, be in order? Okay, is there a second for that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so move, that's the end of our agenda, a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for participating. Nice discussion.